Good evening and welcome to this edition of the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. I'm Eric Marsh, Executive Director. Glad you're able to join us for this hour-long conversation. Tonight, we're actually covering two races. We'll start with the Wayne County Raine Township, excuse me, trustee race, and then we'll move on to the Centerville Abington School Board race. There is a race there, two people running, only one of them will be joining us this evening, and we'll talk to him for a little while in the back half of this hour. First, want to remind you that these folks have put their names on the ballot. They are out going door-to-door, knocking on your door, bothering you during dinnertime. Oh, sorry. Wanting to discuss with you some of the issues and what it is that they do. But they also want you to get registered to vote because they are asking for your vote on November 6th. So, we do remind you that you can get registered to vote. Voter registration continues until Tuesday, October 9th. You can do that Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30, at the voter registration office, 301 East Main Street. Or, you can do it online from the comfort of your home at indianavoters.com. That's indianavoters.com. If you are not sure whether you are registered or not, that's the place to go to even just check that information out. But it is also a downloadable app to your smartphone, and if you are not registered, particularly if you have moved over the last couple of years, you definitely want to look at your registration and make sure that all of the information is correct. So, go, get yourself registered, and be ready to vote. The vote centers will open, and in a couple of weeks, we'll start telling you where those vote centers will be and when you can actually vote. But in the meantime, we'll continue speaking with candidates running for various offices. Want to remind you that next week, we actually have two InFocus Candidate Forums. It is so much fun, we couldn't hold it to one night. October 3rd, we're doing a special Wednesday edition of the InFocus Candidate Forum, as we will speak with candidates running for the northeastern Wayne School Board. October 4th, we'll have candidates running for the 6th Congressional District. Then, the following week, on October 11th, which is also the night of the Taste of Wayne County and Business Expo with our partners, the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, we will be talking with candidates running for Indiana State Representative from District 56. October 18th, Wayne County Council, District 3. October 25th, Indiana State Senate, District 27. And then, all is said and done, and we'll be here on November 6th, election night, beginning at 6:00 PM, until we have all of the votes in from Wayne County, myself, Melissa Vance, joined by, we actually have no idea who, but we hope some people come in, or we're going to end up having a very long conversation.
It could be fun, but-
It could be.
-a very long bit of fun.
And want to welcome Melissa Vance joining us, President, CEO of Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. You can tell it's getting down to crunch time, we have the big guns in tonight.
I don't know about that.
Thanks for joining us.
It's a pleasure to be here.
And, running for Wayne Township Trustee, we have two candidates, Susan Isaacs, Yvonne Washington. Ladies, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate you taking the time to join us, and appreciate you putting your name on the ballot. We'll start by having each of you take a minute, minute and a half, introduce yourself to the community. Susan, we'll start with you.
Okay, I am currently the Wayne Township trustee. It's been eight years. I'd like to make it 12 or 16 years, I'm hoping. My, I was born and raised in Richmond, got my Bachelor's Degree in Business Management with accounting was my thing. That's my, so my actual training is in accounting. I lived in Richmond for, till I was about 35, and then I moved away for about 10 or 15 years, and been back now for, well, about 10 years. So, glad to be back, and came to be the Township trustee by, the person who was the Township trustee was sick and leaving, and there was a caucus, and I said, "Well, that sounds like a job I might be very interested in," and got it. And I've, I just didn't know that much about what it was going to be like, and somebody new walking in with pair of eyes that had, doesn't really know what all the office entails. I was fascinated to see all the things that the offices and other townships were doing, and all the things that are, that are done that were not done in Richmond. It was all very, very small, as far as what they did was very, two or three things. The reason for that is not really any individual's fault or anybody's fault, but 50 years ago, 40 years ago, when they built the center, the annex building, administration building, the then-trustee, Mr. Spears, Grant Spears, gave, not gave, invested $250,000 of the township's funds into helping building it in exchange for 50 years free rent. That's why we're in a town, that's why we're in a county building, that's why so many people confuse us with county. But if you go to other communities that are our size, they have big community centers and parks, and they do all these other things that, in the community, that make it a better place. And so, we've started some new things in this community. I guess we'll probably get into that in a little bit, but I love my job, and I love what I do, and I enjoy the opportunities that I get by, by having this job. I feel like it's what I'm meant to be doing. It's just, I kind of, it just kind of happened, but I, it's really wonderful to wake up every good day and be excited about what you get to do that day and looking forward to it. I mean, not every day is a cupcake, but it's pretty, it's pretty meaningful, and it has changed my heart and made me grow a lot of ways.
Okay. You go on.
I too am a product of Richmond, a native of Richmond, went to Richmond Community Schools. I graduated and left and went to work in the big city for a while. And unfortunately, one of the things that happened to me was I was in a marriage that ended in domestic violence. So, from that time forward, I've been involved in helping other people transform their lives, either through the work that I do or through volunteering, community outreach, that's been a big part of my life. In the services that we offer at Work One, and when I worked there, it was kind of like an umbrella, where people needed help with transportation, childcare, education, you know, just basic barriers to employment that we had to help them work to dismantle. And when you've been in that situation yourself, it gives you more compassion, you're able to actually put yourself in their place, and be able to lead them to the connections that they need, to get the services or whatever kinds of support that they need in order to keep going to school, keep working, keep supporting their family, or if they need to upgrade their situations in life, being able to identify the right resources within the community that will help them do that. So, that's one of my strengths, is being able to help people identify their strengths, their abilities, what things they want to grow or change in their lives, and examining systems. If I am part of a system that's not working very well, being able to take those components apart and say, "Okay, this may work a little bit better if we add or delete or make adjustments."
Okay. We're going to open the questioning. Melissa?
All right. Well, we're going to start off with just an easy question, I hope, and that is, what do you feel like is the most important part of this particular job? If you could, if you could give us one thing that you feel like this is the, this is the most important thing, what would that be? We'll start with you, Yvonne.
Well, I would say the relief and support services that are provided to people who are either working poor or facing some kind of financial challenge. Because, like I said, I've been in crisis mode, and it is very relieving to be able to sit down and talk to someone who has the resources that are needed to get to the next step, figure out, you know, what the next decision should be, so that emergency relief, taking care of the poor.
Great. Susan?
That is certainly the most important part of what we do. I agree. Building relationships with people and, what I, I try to use those dollars and those resources that we have, and the connections that, you know, you build with the other agencies and stuff, and try to focus it on a way that might help people to not just need to keep coming back in, but to find ways to help them help themselves and help them find the resources, like, they have to do workfare if they, if they get assistance, they have to do workfare before they can get assistance again. We've had young people, well, only a couple, but that, they were then there with their parent, and I, we can, we can count going to school and things like that as their workfare. So, his dad was a drug addict, the one, and didn't, didn't care about him going to school, wasn't encouraging him to go to school, didn't probably want him to go to school, but when it meant that he didn't have to come in and do any work, everything changed, and he got his diploma. And it was a few months ago, one of my staff said they saw him in a local fast-food restaurant with a suit tie on. I mean, and he had no teeth, and he was a mess, and he just really, you know, sometimes all it takes is something, and I can use the resources that we have, not to hold them at gunpoint, but to, if you do this, or I'll get somebody, I budget with a lot of people on a monthly basis, especially elderly people, but not always, people that get behind with those dreaded awful, hideous payday loans. I say, "You come in for three months or whatever, and, or six months or whatever it'll take, and if you do exactly, if you just go [growling] and do whatever we do on this budget, if you do that, then I'll provide the support to get you through that," and promise you'll never, you know, and we've saved people's homes, and it's just remarkable. It's, it's amazing.
Well, that's an important piece of, you know, ensuring that we're not enabling poor long-term habits. So, that's, that's definitely a very good piece of the puzzle in regard to what this office does.
All about relationship building, because if you don't do that, you can't really help nobody, you build a barrier so thick that they don't hear anything you say. And I know when I first started, I was a little preachy, but I've grown.
Well, I know there are a lot of people, probably, that are watching tonight, and just in the community in general, that don't know what this office does. How do you communicate that, or would you communicate that, to the general public of what, what the trustees' office does, and how they can go about utilizing those services to help themselves?
Okay. Well, I do a lot of talking to different groups, everything from Kiwanos to Rotaries to whoever wants to listen. We also attend, like, the Veterans Fair, that, they have those every year, we go to that, and just about anything you can imagine, health fairs at different companies and, et cetera. But we also have a community center that we opened a few years ago, that has a lot of, a wide, very wide range of offerings and classes and et cetera. And the people that work there, the staff people that I have there also know, they worked in the township, so they understand the system and how it works, and built relationships with Salvation Army and Open Arms and all the other agencies, many of the other agencies that do the same kind, that have the resources for the same things that we do. And sometimes, many times, it takes more than one agency to, to get somebody over the, over the hump, but we also try to make sure that everybody who comes in that is eligible for ICAP, Community Action, or we distribute the FEMA funds, the local FEMA funds, for heating assistance out of, out of the township, for the whole county. We try to get out there and be where people are and talk to people, and that, that's about the township assistance piece, but there's other pieces, such as the two Pioneer Cemeteries that we have, that we have totally renovated, and took the one on, King Cemetery was just an overgrown thing that would make you want to cry when you walk through it. You look for GPS, and you couldn't see anything but brush. And hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours later, and the mayor coming out there with her big thing, Mayor Sally, she took that big machine out there and bring, hook up big, big old things, and we just had a lot of help, and VFW gave us, you know, 700 bricks to make a veterans' area, and we had like five or six Eagle Scout projects, et cetera. And now, it's gorgeous and beautiful and respectful, and I'd say 75 or 80 stones were reset. It's over 200 years old. And on the land that's just, just adjacent to it, there was, was the Smith Fort, one of the forts back in the day, and it was settled in the early 1800s, the first, 1806, I think, so. It's been a lot, there's a lot of interesting things that we get to do. It's fun.
Well, what I usually rely on is word of mouth, being able to identify what is the center of action for different communities. Like, for our Latino communities there, areas of, far as the Amigos Program, the things that they're involved in, I would find out where people gather, and then share the information there, because she's right, it's about relationship building. And we share that information through people that we trust. So, from there going like one-on-one or open houses, house parties, whatever it would take to get the word out, so that when people are in a crisis, they know how to come and find us to get the support that they need.
Perfect.
You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11, the first part of this program. We're speaking with candidates running for the Wayne Township Trustee, Susan Isaacs, Yvonne Washington. Question, I'd like to go, we are, this is interactive, by the way, so if you have a question, @WCTVinfo, or you can give us a call, 973-8587. The legislature, on a couple of different occasions, have taken a swipe at trying to get rid of township government. Talk to us for a minute about, if we were state legislators, and in my instance, that's never going to happen, and you were trying to convince us that, that this particular office and township government needs to be kept, what is your reasoning behind this office still being viable and something that should have access to taxpayer money? And, Yvonne, we start with you on this.
All right. On this one, I would say it's still viable because it gives people an alternative to Department of Family and Children's Services, even though their processes and procedures and guidelines for both of those agencies, it's very different. And so, they may be able to take advantage of both, or it may just be one. And especially with the conversations that they're having about maybe absorbing some of the smaller townships into larger townships over the next year or so, I think that that's going to be important, because those people in the smaller rural communities may not necessarily know about the other systems that are available, so at least the township government can take them in under that umbrella and get them started, whereas they may not have access or the information before.
I'll just tell you, it's been more than a couple. It's been 20 years. Almost every year, there's, almost every year, there's a threat. So, it's like, you know, you just do the best you can and hope you still have an office to go back to in a year. But a couple things, two reasons why, two big main arguments. One is that purely financially and budgetary, if you look at that, and you look at the services that we provide, and they, they are not duplicative services, they are not. Who's going to take care of the cemeteries that we pay money and mow and keep, you know, the, all of the cemeteries that don't have any money that were formed before 19, I believe it's 29, and before the community, the funding where you had to, you know, funding-
An endowment or something like that?
Yeah, the funding money, a fund that, yeah. Then, they fall to the township, and taking care of them is a big responsibility, and I believe it's important, but also, that's just, that's one of the pieces. The other piece is, who, to provide the services that we provide, they're going to have to have employees. It might be mushed into one officer, it might be something different, but it's not going to save any money. I guarantee you, it wouldn't save any money. So, I don't think that's a valid argument. I also believe that the township government is uniquely situated to be able to be exceedingly responsive to the immediate locality. Like, we started the laundry project, we started a food pantry, I mean, a soap pantry. We see different needs, and we were able to immediately just, just do it. And the other piece of it is, the township, it's kind of, it's a curse and a blessing. One is, we have guidelines for dollars, et cetera, but if you go to the DFR or another, most agencies, it's totally, it's entitlement-based. Means, if you make this much money, this, you get this much if you have this many people in your household. That's it. There's no, you know, it's, 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 it's just about the numbers. When you come to us, ours is different, it's, it's about, it's needs-based, not entitlement, which means if you had this much resources, and your bills were this much, did you have enough to pay your bills? And if you didn't, was it some crisis that happened? Or, we have this flexibility there, where we can make a one-time exception, if somebody's got the payday loan, they screwed up, yeah, they screwed up, yeah, they could be denied. You can find a reason to deny anybody practically. But if you feel, if the person's sincere and willing to do their part, and you might make an exception at one or two times to get them out of that, and then they're just, you know, their lives are changed. And we have a payee program where we have about 50 to 60 people who are on some sort of social security. We have two full-time people in our office that that's all they do, and they are mama bears to these people. We have had people, you would not believe until you start working with this population, how abused and ripped off and stolen from they are, it's just awful. I mean, we couldn't afford to be poor, middle-class people, because everything they get is over, not everything, but many things that they get-
Overcharged.
-way overcharged. We would never pay some of the fees they pay and all the, et cetera, and just, so they have a layover protection and some security, and I've seen many people walk through those doors, and two or three months after they're in that program, they're, they look like a different person. So, there's so much stuff that we get to do that nobody else does, and they would either fall to the wayside, which would be a shame, because those people need these services, or somebody else would be doing it, and it just wouldn't be called away on township trustee. And I just think, fiscally, it doesn't make any sense, and ethically, it doesn't make any sense. So, I, I hope it never happens, but-
You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. I mentioned this was interactive, and we were taking questions from viewers, we had one come in, so we'll get that up, we'll get that answered. Who are you funded by? Are you funded by Wayne County Government?
No.
You get to start this one, so you start to the-
We're not funded by Wayne County Government at all. We're in the Wayne County Administration Building, because when it was built, the trustee at the time gave $250,000 to help enable them to be able to do the project in exchange for 50 years free rent. Most trustees in towns our size have freestanding buildings with community centers and other things, but you don't walk away from free rent. We're about eight or 10 years away from it being 50 years, so we've started a CUMF fund, so that when that does happen, we will be able to get a building and, rather than be charged where we're at. I'm sure they would like to have that space, too. But we are funded by property taxes, and if you look, it's, I don't think I looked at this year's, but I think it's been pretty steadily. If you look at the total tax dollar, property tax dollar statewide, 3% goes to township government, 3%. So, it's not this big humongous piece of, of the budget, and, and, yeah, it's, it's downplay that it's taxpayer dollar, yes it is, and we think about that as we're spending it, but it's 3% of the tax dollar. It's not a huge amount, and when they talk about all the reserves that townships have, I guarantee you, and I would bet everything I ever owned, that if that money were placed, were taken away, like they have tried in the past and given it to the, to the county, it would be like this. The county budget is so much bigger, that a million dollars, like this, boom! And then, and then that safe, could, safety cushion, it would be gone, and nobody would feel any difference whatsoever, I guarantee you, because that's how it works. And the reason that those have built up is not because we get it, we don't, we don't get to raise our tax rate or anything anymore than anybody else, it's just, in the township level, you don't get penalized if you don't spend your money. At many other government offices, you get penalized if you don't spend your money. So, instead of running out, and I'm not bad-mouthing anybody, but I'm, you know, like in business, it's the same way. If you know next year, if I don't spend this $12,000, I'm not getting it again, I'm going to find some way to spend that $12,000. It's not a bad thing, maybe I'm spending on something we do need, but I might not otherwise get. So, I, that's how, that's how they come. It's not that, you know, we're bandits, it's that I think the money is, there's less pressure to spend it.
Then, you want to add to that, or jump in on?
Well, I just had a question. I understand that it comes from property taxes. Have you seen a change in those amounts over the years as the properties have gone down?
Oh, yeah, the tax caps have made an extremely, they've made a big difference for a lot of people. You, you do your budget, and you do the 3.4% or whatever, and you make sure it's under that, but then, you never really know how much money you're going to get until, and it's getting wider and wider every year, so, yeah. The, the definitely has been less. And in really small townships, it's really hurt them really bad. We have been able to absorb it, but it's a lot less in many years. I forget what it was last year, but this year, it was so bad, that it was so shockingly large to me, and I can't remember the number, that I went and talked to the DLGS, the local, Department of Local Government's finance person, and said, "What is going on? Did they make a mistake?" And she said, "No, that's not a mistake." So, yeah, it's, it's getting tougher for all, all government offices.
Okay. We've got the next question, and we've got about 10 minutes left, and we've got another chat question up, so we're going to move through these pretty quickly.
Great. Well, kind of, to piggyback on the question that you just answered, if you were elected, how would you best leverage those available resources for the greatest impact? We all have a, we all have a budget that we have to work with, and we look at that every year, and what kinds of things would you do to be able to make that go the furthest that it could possibly go? Let's start with you.
I'd have to see the budgets first to find out, you know, where the, where the money is going right now, but evaluate the things that are the priorities would be the first choice. Are we doing things that we could reduce or eliminate, and then change funds around, you know, if that was an option? So, without actually handling the budget and producing, you know, the expenses, I wouldn't really be able to give you an exact answer on that one.
Sure.
One, one piece of that is, kind of on the flip side, I'm more of a go-for-more-stuff kind of girl. We get a lot, a lot of funding from the public for other things. The Richmond Catholic Community gives us thousands and thousands of dollars every year to help people with their utilities and stuff. Not replaceive, I never, ever use any donated funds for something that, they qualify for township, township pays first. But I use it for, if I need, if somebody's got a $700 bill, and I can only pay 300, or it's, there's no certain dollar amount, it's really supposed to be one month's usage, I might have to call Salvation Army and Open Arms and use my parish fund, and, you know, all these different resources, and send them to ICAP, and, and so, we have, we have the FEMA funds that come to us, which are tax dollars, they're federal tax dollars, and we disperse the, the dollars that are not, not, that are for housing and utilities out of our office. We've been doing that for about three years since the president was doing it before left, and so, that, that's about, I want to say it's about $20,000, $25,000, I'm not sure, a year, which is for utilities, and we also have a soap pantry, or the laundry project is about two-thirds funded by, by churches and et cetera. We've never had to buy a bottle of soap or anything like that, all that's been just people bringing it in, bringing it in, bringing it in. We had a whole roomful, one time, we had to stop, we didn't say, "Don't bring it in," or, we never put anything out there about it for a while, so. It's, things like that, and we did the, well, it wasn't really the township, but it started from a meeting at the township about the Hope House. They were getting prison-grade food, and it was like $2.50 a meal, and they were just doing it because it was cheap. Well, they were going to raise them to like $6.50. And, and she starts, the, Whitney, the director of the Hope House, started sending me, because she would tell me about, and we'd talk about it, and she'd start sending me pictures of big, giant, black burnt meatballs and all these horrible things, and plus, they were running into, you know, where they needed to find a place to move, and it was going to be about $60,000 a year for that garbage food. And I thought, you know, this is a wonderful community, I've come to see how, how giving people are in this community, it's amazing. And I got, we got 30 individuals, the groups of people, churches, businesses, restaurants, to sign up for one day a month, the third Tuesday, the fourth whatever, and now, every single night, oh, no, just Monday through Friday, because on the weekends, they eat the leftovers and do whatever, but they get delicious church lady-cooked food, I deliver it sometimes, it smells so good, and the couple of restaurants, one of them does every single Tuesday, the Firehouse BBQ, and just different, it's a, it's a wonderful thing, and not just because of the food, and not just because they save 60 grand, but because those people go in there and talk to them, and they, they don't feel like the scour of the earth. I think it's really helped their morale, that people go and have cookouts with them, I mean, that's good stuff, you know, so it's a wonderful thing. Things like that, I just love to do that kind of stuff.
You're watching the InFocus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11, speaking with candidates for Wayne Township Trustee. We have another chat question that came in. If someone is homeless, and they are staying here in Wayne County, maybe at a shelter or truly homeless, but only have ID, but the only ID they have is an old ID from another county, can you, will you give that person assistance? I assume that can you, will you, is, is it legal for you to do that? Start.
We have, we have transients, where we can help them a little bit with that, or if there's somebody who lives here or has been, it doesn't matter how long they're living here, the, actually, the test for are they a resident is what's their intent. It's that loose. So, if that person, that person is living in, lives in an apartment down the street or something, even if they've only lived there a month or whatever, we will make one time, where they can use an out-of-state, an expired or anything license one time, but then we will tell them how, how to go get the free ID, or do we need, I help, we have helped many, many people get out-of-state birth certificates and stuff, and that's all they need. And I say, "People don't," you know how much that helped me, to just get that ID, and it's just mind-blowing, and it's cost 30 bucks, and I usually use the parish, the church fund for that. And so, we do, and we offer something, an option for them to, to take care of us, but if they don't, then they come back the next time, that's on them. But we don't just say one time, no matter what, we say one time, and here's what you can do, and we, we will help them do it, we'll use our computers, and I'll mail it, and they can use our mailing address even. So, yeah.
Okay. Yvonne?
Well, that's nice to know, because I didn't know that they could use your mailing address.
Yeah, and they can use the food stamps office, too.
And get that. But yes, I would say, we would always verify, you know, the situation and where they came from, and then offer assistance as to what was available, because a state ID is not very much, and I don't think that would eliminate, you know, people's chances for getting the relief that they needed.
I would say that if they don't have a, if they don't have a license, if they don't have a photo ID and a social security card, it does, by code, preclude us from assisting them. So, we help them get that as quick as we can.
Okay.
We've helped a lot of people get them.
And we do have one more chat question, so let's get to that one, because we're down to our last few minutes. How long will you give someone prescription assistance? Is it just one time? We'll let you take a stab at it, Yvonne, if you want. I know you're not in the office, so it's hard for you to answer that.
Exactly.
I assume it would be based on law, but.
Well, yes, you'd have to figure out, is it a legitimate prescription first? And then, what does the code say? Is it one time or?
No, actually, well, there's a rule specifically for insulin that says, even without investigating their situation at all, that they can come in and get insulin one time. Doctor write them a note, and they say they need insulin, and that's, just for some reason, that's a separate part of the code for insulin. But for other prescriptions, and for any assistance we get, there's no limit to the numbers, number of times you can come. But that plays into, you have to do job searches, you have to do workfare. There are things you have to do. You can't just, you know, be a crackhead and come in and get assistance every month. That's not how it works. So we don't have a lot of people, and we work really hard to help people find other, other resources. And people come in that are getting, that are, that get social security, and they're being, they get $800 social security, and they're getting 150 pulled out for their medical. And nobody tells them at social security that they don't have to pay that. If they go fill out a piece of paper, the state will pay that. That's another way. You get 134 dollars extra for each one of those people. We help get that. And they might only get $60 worth of stamps if they can get those. And we find all the resources that we can and kind of wrap it around them and stuff, and try to get them where they can make it, get them from being behind, and get them really, really, they just have to grit their teeth, and I'll be right beside them. And that's why, and they laugh and say, "I'll do it." And they do a lot of them.
Do you have to have a prescription? Do you have to see a prescription?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
In order to get that assistance?
And the other thing is, and this was a decision that I made years ago, because it has to be part of your guidelines, that we don't do any controlled substances or certain street drugs, because I don't want to be part of that problem. So we do everything else. We've helped people with dental, if they have a really bad, it's only if they're having a huge pain or something. We've helped people buy it. I mean, we can do all sorts of things if the situation really shows that that would, that person needs a pair of steel-toed boots, and they've got a job starting tomorrow, and I verify that, I'm going to buy them a pair of shoes. I call and put them on my Visa, and they go pick them up at Walmart. You know, it's just stuff like that. There's so many little things that the township can do that DFR can't do that. It's a wonderful, beautiful thing.
Okay. I assume that you've checked all of this out, and you, again, now, she just said, because I'm going to give you a chance to, she just said she made a decision not to do certain prescriptions, or certain types of drugs. Is that something that you would follow through, or would you create your own list? Have you thought about how that might work for you? If you have open guidelines to the state, what things you might put into place that you're not comfortable handling?
Well, with the open guidelines, like I said, I'd have to review those and find out. But yes, I wouldn't want to be a part of things that are leading to, you know, the opiate addiction. But if someone has a legitimate need for those, that's where we have to find out. Because if it's after a surgery or, you know, an extended disability, it makes a big difference.
Okay. I have to thank you, ladies, because we're going to move on, and I have to apologize to any viewers whose questions we didn't get to. We had, actually had a couple of additional chat questions that we didn't have time to get to.
They can call me, right?
So there are people interested in this race, so obviously, they will be looking for you all in the coming weeks to get your questions answered. Yvonne Washington, running for Wayne Township Trustee, Democrat ballot, I didn't mention that at the beginning. Susan Isaacs, running for Wayne Township Trustee on the Republican side. This is one of those quote-unquote partisan elections. Ladies, again, thank you very much for taking your time this evening.
Thanks for having me.
Putting your name on the ballot.
Yes.
Sit tight. We will be back. We have candidate for Centerville-Abington School Board that we'll bring in as we continue with the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11.
The IU East Red Wolves host the University of Rio Grande Red Storm in another exciting River States Conference matchup Saturday afternoon on Lindo Court in the IU East Student Events and Activities Center. Come out, make some noise, and show your support for the hometown IU East Red Wolves. If you can't make it to the gym, catch the match live beginning at 11:55 on Wayne County's education access station and the home of the Red Wolves, WETV Channel 20.
The community should be prepared for disasters, because we have to be able to help ourselves. There are less and less resources available from the state and federal government, so we have to be resilient, not only as individuals, but as a community. But we have to be prepared. We have to have plans in place. We have to have emergency kits. Just the better that we're prepared as individuals and as families will then, in turn, help us as communities be better prepared for emergencies.
Hi, I'm registered dietitian Jennifer Stockler.
And I'm chef Dugan Wetzel.
We are the hosts of iHeart Cooking. This month, we are in Elstrop Plaza cooking up heart-healthy side dishes. Lots of vegetables, great in lower calories, lower sodium, lower carbs, something that pairs easy with any kind of meat dish that you want to have.
Join us on Monday nights on WETV Channel 20 at 9:30 as we cook up more heart-healthy recipes.
Hi, I'm Professor Tim Skels, and the director of the Center for Entrepreneurship here at Indiana University East, but most importantly, the host of In Your Business. Join me this month, and my guest is Amy Smith from The Dog's Pajamas.
Scheduling, it's logistics, it's planning, it's everything. It's customer service, making sure my clients are happy.
I'd like to invite you to watch In Your Business, WETV Channel 20, Tuesday nights at 9:30 PM.
On this month's Access to the Arts, we're going to be on the campus of Earlham College talking with Joe Lepone, Ray Ontko, Steve Borchers. We'll have an artist spotlight, and Monica Coachlon will talk about youth outreach for the RSO.
We want events that engage our students, but also engage the community.
I think the arts help us as individuals and as a community, you know, express ourselves.
Access to the Arts, Thursday nights at 9 on WETV Channel 20.
I'm Al Bledsoe.
I'm Ron Chappell, co-host here with Elliot, proudly we serve. Our guest on our next program is Brian Ray from Work One, and he's going to be telling us about a whole bunch of stuff that he's got coming up for veterans.
Watch our program on Channel 20, WETV, 8 PM, Monday evening.
Welcome back to the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11. I'm Eric Marsh, Executive Director of WCTV, joined by Melissa Vance, President/CEO of the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce, our partner in these candidate forums. And we have rotated the chairs a little bit and moved in Brad Lambright. Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well. Brad is with the, currently with Centerville-Abington School Board and is running for reelection, has come in this evening just to get grilled by us. You were here a few weeks ago, and we appreciate you coming back.
Sure. Well, thanks for having me back.
We've got about 20 minutes. We will let you start the questioning.
Well, first of all, thank you for being here. We appreciate it. Of course, I'm with the chamber, so I'm going to start with a workforce question. What skills do you think are necessary for students who are graduating from high school and then moving into higher education, or immediate employment, or maybe into a certificate program? What skills do you think are the most important or are imperative that those students graduate with?
Well, I mean, above and beyond the basics, I mean, math and the English, I mean, that's never goes away. But, you know, tech is just becoming more and more important, you know, not only in our day-to-day lives, but in jobs. I mean, kids would be surprised, no matter what job they go into, how, you know, some of the technology that they may have been exposed to in school
Right.
comes into play in the workforce. So my answer would be that, you know, the technology, you know, from the computers, the, just along that line. The more they can get, even in school, and if they decide to go on to, you know, higher education, even there, it's more, it's important there as well. But, and that's why we have, as a matter of fact, we had a board meeting last night, and, you know, technology was a big part of our conversation, because at the, you know, the elementary level, we're not fully one-to-one yet with the computers. And, you know, our principal, who was, had made mention of that, and so we discussed that a little bit further and decided, you know, can we expedite this? And so that, you know, that's my opinion, and I think the rest of the board shares that, that that's a big piece of
Absolutely.
going forward, the tech piece of it.
It's definitely an expectation. You know, it's interesting, whether you're going into manufacturing or other things, everything has this electronic component to it, so it's interesting. So that leads me to my next question, which is, how do you foresee schools connecting with current businesses and connecting students with businesses and vice versa to forge a relationship even prior to graduation?
Well, of course, there's the, where we have the seniors as interns that are going into businesses. I mean, my, one of my own daughters, you know, interned at Reed, and now today, she's a nurse at Reed. So that's an excellent opportunity. I mean, we're not unique in that. I'm sure other schools do that, do that, too. But that's huge. And, you know, when you get to the college level, if you, it's kind of the same thing. If you work for a company as an intern or for a summer, you know, a lot of times, you have your foot in the door, too, because now you're no longer an unknown entity. You, if you would happen to apply there, then you've got, you've already got that experience, and they have the firsthand experience with you. So that's one way. There's the job fairs that the school would participate in. And, you know, being, I work in one of the companies here in town as well, and, you know, getting our participation in that as well, because getting good workers in the, you know, in manufacturing right now, it's a challenge. It's a challenge everywhere. And, you know, it's not just unique to this, our county right now. So, I mean, those are two that immediately come to mind.
Brad, what do you think is the biggest issue that school districts are facing right now?
Well, one challenge is declining enrollment in some areas. You know, Centerville has been fortunate, where the last two years, our numbers have actually gone up. And not huge, but, you know, we have reversed the trend, because over the few years prior to that, we've been going the other direction. So, and I know other schools, and one in particular, a little bit south of us, got hit pretty hard this year. So that's a challenge, not only, you know, not only for us to, you know, maybe we have, you know, temporarily reversed the trend, but to keep that going in the other direction, to make our school as, you know, that be the school people would want to, you know, bring their kids to. You know, 22 years ago, when we moved into the, to the area, and my wife grew up here, and I didn't, but when we moved here, the schools was a huge part of where are we going to live?
Absolutely.
And that's why we picked where we're at. And, you know, we've lived in Centerville now for 22 years. And, you know, we've had a good reputation, but you can't, you can't sit back now and, you know, rest on your laurels, because, you know, when other schools are facing similar challenges, you know, the bar gets raised. So, you know, we have got to, you know, make sure we're taking it to the next level. And that was another big part of our conversation last night, as we discussed with principals, our school improvement plans, and our go-forward plans. And now, you know, we're here, but now, how do we get here? So, and there was really some good conversation last night.
Great.
You're watching the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV Channel 11, speaking with Brad Lambright, candidate for Centerville-Abington Schools. We did have a chat question coming in, so we want to try to get to those as they come in and get questions asked. 72% of children and youth will experience at least one adverse childhood experience, AEC, before the age of 18. Adverse childhood experiences are divided into three types: child abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. How dramatic are these issues in your community, and how do you see your school system supporting these students? And that was actually part of a conversation that was held last week, what schools are needing to do now to assist students in, who may not have home lives that are conducive to getting up every morning, getting out to school, and that type of thing. How is the school system handling that?
Well, I mean, unfortunately, those are issues that, I can't say that, you know, Centerville is unique and we don't have those issues, because, you know, we do. But a lot of that is having the proper staff and proper training in place to recognize these issues, because, you know, a lot, if it's a student that has an issue, you know, there may be times where they're not going to tell you. There are times where, you know, you have to be trained to recognize the signals, recognize the signs, and maybe approach that student yourself. So, you know, having the proper staff and the right amount of staff, and, you know, proper training is huge to be, because that's why we're there. We're there for the kids. I mean, that's, that's what our teachers are there for, and that's what, so if there's an issue like that, where we can be of benefit to help a child with something outside of school, something at home, something they may be dealing with, that's a big part of why we're here.
With the funding issues that schools are having, and you mentioned, you know, kind of on the upswing right now, but had been going that way, how do you keep those additional services in place? Everybody, the conversation is about putting as much or as many dollars in the classroom as possible. When it comes to additional counseling and things of that nature, how is the school board handling those discussions, and what are you all looking at as a whole?
Right. Well, our superintendent does a great job of looking at those things, and, you know, looking at what, you know, what dollars we do have coming in, the staff we have. And if, you know, in years past, in worst-case scenario, when, you know, hey, we don't have the funding to support, you know, X number of staff, you know, what then, what are the vital areas, and where are the areas that we would have to look at first, potentially? So it's not a matter of the board, you know, sitting around and saying, "Oh, well, I think it should be this," or "I think..." Typically, you know, our superintendent will come to us with, "Here's the issue. Here's, you know, scenario A, scenario B, scenario C." And then we'll discuss that as a group and determine what is the, what is the best, the best way to go. Sometimes, sometimes it's not a popular decision, but you have to do.
You run into a few of those, huh?
You do. You do.
Brad, with the teacher shortages around the state, what do you see Centerville-Abington school system doing, or what should they be doing to make sure that they're attracting high-quality teachers and retaining teachers, so that it reduces the amount of turnover?
Well, I think, again, the reputation we have, the test scores, to, you know, if we keep those where, keep those up and keep those improving, the, a lot of it is the environment itself, the work environment for the teachers, you know, the relationships that, you know, teachers would have with their administrators, administrators with the superintendent, superintendent with the board, that everybody, everybody works together. I think that, we've had teachers that have commented, that have come from other school systems and have made that comment to us, that, you know, this, this environment itself is just so much more conducive to, you know, being able to do my job. And, you know, to maintain that, to make sure, you know, when, if an administrator position opens up, that we take that very seriously about who we put into that position. Because, you know, the last thing you want to do is backslide on, you know, where you're at before. You want to... You want to maintain and continue moving forward. So, that's a big part of it.
Sure.
You're watching the In Focus Candidate Forum on Whitewater Community Television's WGTV, Channel 11. We have one more question that has come in from a viewer. We'll throw that up and get an answer. Does the community as a whole understand the job that school boards are required to do? What's one thing you want voters to understand about the time and commitment to serve your community in this way?
I don't think a lot of people understand the, I mean, they know we have meetings. We have our regular school board meetings typically twice a month. But then there are other meetings where we may have our budgetary meetings. For the example, the month of July, we may meet every, every week. Last week, we met as a, we had a special session where we had to go over a, an evaluation, a performance evaluation as a board. There are other, there's training that we'll go to, you know, the state offers training. So, we may take, you know, use our own personal vacation days and go to some training that's offered. And a lot of the, several of our board members, I wasn't able to go a few weeks ago, but came back with great information on, you know, security for the school because the state had brought in this outside person, I think he travels the country and does these presentations. And just some of the information they brought back was just so good, you know, some thinking outside the box on some things that, so, I know, again, a little off track from what the question was because of the time, the time element of it. But another big piece of it is the preparing for the board meeting because we'll get a packet ahead of time. A lot of it's on the flash drive, but there's a lot of reading you have to do. There's evenings where you'll spend reading some policies. Policies change. When state laws change, we have to make sure we're up to date and that our policies reflect the latest laws. It can get a little dry sometimes, but there's that amount of time. So, you may put several hours into just going through some materials for the meeting that takes place on Wednesday. And, you know, if we have a meeting and, you know, say my son has a baseball game, unfortunately, you know, I have to miss the game and I'm at the meeting. So, there's things you do miss from time to time. So, there are some time commitments. And then there's some things we do voluntarily too. I mean, there's, I like to go to, you know, other school events that my kids may not be in just to, just because, I mean, after, you know, 22 years in the, in the community, it's, the school is part of our life. So, that's just what we like to do.
It's definitely a needed service that, you know, as community members, I don't think we take lightly. We know it's a big responsibility. Kind of leads me to my next question. I don't know if you saw an article that the chamber put out a couple months ago, but really looking at education system, it provides a wonderful service, obviously, providing education for our youth, but there's a business component to making decisions and keeping things running smoothly and, and looking at those financial reports and making sure that budgets are in line and dealing with HR issues. What skills do you bring to the table that help address those?
Well, that's a, that's a good question. I actually started my career as a teacher. So, I've, I've kind of seen this from both sides. I was a high school math teacher for a couple of years. And so, I, you know, I've been in the classroom, had kids, you know, discipline issues here and those kind of things. So, you know, I, I understand it from the teacher's perspective for sure. You know, since then, I've been in the, you know, different manufacturing positions, supervision positions where, and you have to, you have to make those financial, and basically what we do, and we talk about this as a board, is we have to, we have to look at this school as a business because you have to, you know, you have to make things work on the resources that you have. And, you know, that leads to some of those difficult decisions you have to make from time to time. So, you know, a lot of it with the, I guess, the college training that I had in the, you know, the education field. But, you know, being outside of teaching then in my late, you know, now in these later years, now I'm still, I still have that connection with the school.
It's nice having that inside view and the outside view and being able to tie it all together. It's good.
Brad, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
No problem. Brad is running for District D at-large seat, running against Stephen Van Winkle, who was unable to be with us this evening, but we appreciate you taking the time to come in. And you came in a few weeks ago and talked about being, we were trying to get people to run for school board.
That's right.
And you came in and did that and we appreciate that too and the time commitment that, that goes into being a school board member.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being here. We will see you next week.
Next week.
Okay.
My pleasure.
I want to remind you again that you still have time to get registered to vote. You can do that at the Wayne County Clerk's Office, 301 East Main Street in Richmond. That's Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM. You can register to vote until Tuesday, October 9th. If you'd like to do it from home, you can do that. IndianaVoters.com is where you want to go to take care of that. Our In Focus Candidate Forums, I mentioned, will be next week, two next week. One with three candidates running for northeastern Wayne School Board. That will be a special Wednesday night edition of the In Focus Candidate Forum. It will start at 6:00 PM as our Thursday, October 4th show will be. Our Wednesday, October 3rd show will be one hour. Our October 4th show will be 90 minutes as we talk with candidates running for the sixth congressional district. October 11th, Indiana State Rep., District 56, Wayne County Council, District 3, and Indiana Senate, District 27. If you missed any of the questions or want to see the show again, our replays are tonight at 10:30, also tomorrow night at 8:00 PM, Saturday, 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM, Sunday at 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM. It will also be available on our Facebook page as we are streaming this Facebook Live. And the audio of this program can also be heard on G101.3 and 100.9 ESPN Radio, Sunday at 6:00 AM. Couple of things to remind you about real quickly happening in the community. The Aristocats are taking place at Richmond Civic Theater. That is going on Saturday and Sunday. GoRCT.org for more information on that. Happening Saturday at the Coleman Center and the Wayne County Fairgrounds, Stop the Bleed. Join us as they teach individuals how to stop bleeding using some very simple materials and techniques. You can get more information from that at BleedingControl.org. And then Solar Systems happens 10:00 to 11:30 on Saturday at Cope Environmental Center. Thank you very much for watching this edition of the In Focus Candidate Forum, being made possible by Whitewater Community Television and our partners, the Wayne County Area Chamber of Commerce. We hope you get out and enjoy what should be a very nice fall weekend around Wayne County. Thanks for watching. Have a great weekend.